I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of Baraboo to order from Monday, August 27, 2012, through the roll call. Mr. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Merriman?
Here.
Mr. Mortimer?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Pedro?
Here.
And go back here. Continue with the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The board has made a motion that be resolved per education group minutes of August 27, 2012, as printed.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Pedro, seconded by Cummings, in discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the minutes as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Minutes approved. Brings us to correspondence, which I have none. Any other board members with correspondence? Hearing none, I'll call the administrative correspondence.
I did receive this after the board packets went out, and I did email a copy to the board, but I think it's important enough that, it's two paragraphs. I received a letter from Mayor Mike Palm. The city of Baraboo is working on the next phase of its planning for a new public safety administration building. The city council approved a resolution on June 12, designating the Oak Street at Second Avenue neighborhood as the general area they would like to focus on for the new building. The city council and city staff have studied various limitations throughout the city for a new building site. After considerable discussion, the council felt it was important to commit to staying in downtown Baraboo. The school district administration building is within our planning area for this project, and they would like to have further discussion with the district about how we could work together on this project. And they went into various reasons why they selected that site. The preliminary meetings will be coordinated through city staff, and if we would like to participate or to let city administrator Ed Geit know who the designated point of contact for the district will be. So I suggest when we're talking about the facility study and we're talking about our buildings, that we include that in the discussion.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Public Viewpoints. This is the period where we hear from our constituents. Per court policy, Policy 187, the board will not hear complaints against school personnel or complaints against any person connected with the school system during the agenda item entitled Public Viewpoints. If you're speaking on your own behalf, please state your name for the record. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, please state the name of the group and your name. Then having been said, do we have any public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Yes. Push the microphone. Looks like we've got three.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
John Meagans, Todd Greiffield. Four weeks ago, I asked Baraboo School Board members to make a brief statement whether they had applied for district positions that would be covered by contracts to be discussed in closed session. None of you did. Two weeks ago, I asked that board present its detailed plan for improving dismal student academic outcomes when compared to their Badger North peers, with quantifiable metrics for student achievement, and clearly integrated with administration compensation to support the board's action of giving generous Badger North-sized administration raises. I see tonight's agenda does not include such a presentation. These were two very simple requests. The first asked for disclosure. You were silent. The second asked you to support your action, and you failed to. You're neither responsive to the public nor as transparent as you claim. Tonight, you will talk about ACT results. Allow me to put the college readiness results into their proper perspective. You will not hear the presenter say that 2012 was a continuation of downward trends in English, math, reading, and science. You also won't hear the presenter brag that only 23% of Baraboo ACT test takers meet college readiness in all four areas. Instead, you will hear that more students took the ACT tests this year than in the past five years. When more than three-quarters of college-bound students fail to meet college readiness, it isn't just a problem. It's a colossal cluster of a problem. These ACT results are yet another example that our Baraboo School District is on the decline. So put away the party favors, get a reasonable and rational perspective on the issues, and tell the community how, specifically how, you are going to increase student academic outcomes, complete with metrics to measure the progress, and then do it. Let's face some other facts. A majority of Baraboo School Board members do not provide a positive inspiration of character, morality, integrity, fairness, justice, or leadership in their service as board members.
Yeah, I don't really take that.
Excuse me.
If you're going to get into personal accusation and character assassination, I can't have that at public viewpoint.
I said a majority.
That still is. Okay, so you're not doing it to everybody, but that's, if you're, that's the tone of your message, then I'm going to ask you to be done.
The effect of these shortcomings include, but are certainly not limited to, declining student academic outcomes, low employee morale, high employee turnover, parents and business owners fearing retribution from an empire of administrative bureaucrats. Does any of this sound familiar?
Every week.
The current majority on the Baraboo School Board is not part of the solution. It is a source of a multiple, multitude of ongoing problems. Unless and until you accept this fundamental idea, student outcomes will continue to be impaired, and our district will continue to underperform. As a board member, you may ask yourself, what can I do today? Far be it for me, a lowly bottom feeder, to suggest that you're in over your head. Far be it for me to suggest you take action now for the benefit of students, employees, taxpayers, and our community, and that for you to remain on the board will be a detriment to us all.
Appreciate you hearing my advice now. Do we have any further public viewpoints?
I'm Jennifer Schultz. I'm the agriculture teacher at Baraboo High School. I'd just like to introduce myself to all of you formally. This will be my second year at Baraboo High School. I would just like to thank all of you for the support that you've given the agriculture program and all of the benefits that we give the students here at the high school. In the near future, students will be able to receive biotechnology credits that I have applied for through M A T C. So this next coming semester, they will be able to take my course and receive M A T C credits. So I thought that would be a great opportunity for students. Also, in the next coming years, when I receive my master's degree in agriculture education, students may also then get college credits. So that's another great opportunity for our students at Baraboo High School. I brought a couple of my officers, and they would like to present you with the district calendars that we have created from the FFA. So they're complimentary from us, and they are a great fundraiser for our national convention this coming school year. And that, we'll be talking about that later. And if you have any questions about national convention and the field trip, just let me know. I'll be here. Thank you.
Jennifer, thank you very much. I wanted to ask you a quick question. What is your professional opinion, or could you reiterate your professional opinion regarding the support that you feel your program receives from this administration and the board?
I, I believe that my professional opinion, I have great support from both my administration here at the high school and the school board. I couldn't ask for more, to be honest with you.
Thank you. And could you also expand a little bit on what you feel as a professional? The morale is of your students and your colleagues in the field?
I-
The morale?
Okay. For my students, I believe the morale is overall really high. Last year, we went through a lot with, with the loss of Josh. I did my best to be there for them and help them as much as I could, but overall, I believe the morale of my students is really well, as well as the staff. There are a lot of new staff, and we're trying to integrate and get to know everyone and work together as a whole.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions, Jennifer? How much? You said that's a fundraiser?
Yeah.
How much do you sell these for?
No, they're actually free. We sold the ads on the front, and that's how we received funds for the national convention. So we'll be distributing them to all of the elementary schools. All the youngest member of each family will receive them for free. So they know when teacher conferences are, so they have no excuse.
Nobody's off the hook. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Order.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Do we have any other public viewpoint? Yes.
Hi, I'm Troy Leatherberry, president of the Baraboo FFA.
I am Peter Mueller, sentinel of the Baraboo FFA.
And for these calendars, what we did was we just sold black and white ads for $200 and colored ones for $250. And they go towards, the funds go towards helping to pay for our trip towards national convention. And it'll cut the cost of the member to go in half. So it'll be 170 instead of 340. So that should help out a lot of kids.
Where is your national convention?
Indianapolis, Indiana. Yeah, it's pretty fun out there.
And what does that, what does that pick next?
That is-
October 22 through the-
22 to 27.
That's right. That's right.
It's on the calendar.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public viewpoint? Yes.
I'm Dr. Mary Rose Lucy. I'm on the agenda underneath the title of TBA for reading specialists at- under the cloak of secrecy.
Lots, lots of acronyms around here.
I just wanted to take a few minutes. I know I haven't really officially started yet, so it's my T-minus three hours of being here in Baraboo. I just wanted to give you a couple of ideas of how come I was attracted to a school district like Baraboo. I'm coming from the metro Milwaukee area, but you guys are way far ahead of a lot of things that are happening for us in Milwaukee area because of your time with the 21st century. Yes, we're over, you know, a decade into it, and people are still sort of poking around, except for Baraboo and a few places across the state that are really embracing the idea that the 21st century learners are different than the 20th century learners, and we can't continue to treat that as if that doesn't exist. Yes, it is an investment. It's an investment in technology, and it's an investment in professional development, but it's also a question for the people that are not investing in those two things. What is their thoughts about what is the future for these students that we are not treating like they're different? And they are different. These are digital natives coming to us. They need to have their things shot at them in a different way. So, so far, I've been really impressed. I was only here today, got hired on Thursday afternoon, so I missed the first couple days of new teacher orientation. I, as you can tell, I'm not a new teacher. But I've been in nine different school districts, so I know what I was looking for. And I think I found it in Baraboo because of the way that people are supported for what they believe in, and that there's a real focus here. I was applying for jobs similar to Lori's, and I could not deal with the frustration of being in a district that was not moving forward in the 21st century and that was steeped in tradition to the point where they were really sort of stuck in concrete. Couldn't move forward, couldn't do it. That just doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense. When we have kindergarteners showing up with cell phones, and we're still treating everybody like they, like when we were in kindergarten. It's very different for these guys. The professional learning community, that is very obvious here, very obvious that teachers are supported, administrators are supported in their own learning, so that we're not looking at being very stale. It's kind of, it's like, let's get going. We're going to do all of this stuff. Lori was literally out of breath, showing us all the stuff that's happening.
They're not used to that at all.
I think I just get, I think I know you enough to know that that's sort of what's going to happen, but in absence of that, I've been in staff meetings where that is absent. And the whole idea of what's happening in the district can be said in a couple sentences. It should be several slides. It should be a lot of things happening, because we've got a lot of different needs that we're trying to attend to. So it's very interesting to me that you're supporting your young readers with as many reading specialists as you have. That's awesome. I'm coming from a district that's half the size. We had one reading specialist for the district. So, you know, the support for kids that are struggling is really here for those kids and for those kids all across the spectrum. I mean, I know I've been focusing, kind of listening to what's happening with strugglers, but I'm guaranteed, by the way that you are supporting your teachers, that there's going to be great things happening in every classroom. So I'm not trying to butter you up. I know you're leaving on me, but- I was really, I, I wanted you to know that there were other options for me at my age and with my credentials, but Baraboo is the one that stuck out to me as the place to be.
Mary, thank you for coming in. Welcome to Baraboo.
Thank you.
When I looked through at your resume, I did wonder why you had chosen Baraboo. But you chose it for all the right reasons, the reasons that you just enumerated. I think that's what you're looking for. That's what we're trying to do here. And the fact that you came tonight, it's true, it's before the vote, but you did, you've been hired. With that, that you came tonight to talk to us, I appreciate very much. Thank you.
All right. I look forward to meeting you and working with all of you. Remember that when you're voting.
Any other public viewpoints?
I have a public viewpoint that came through as an email that I would like to read.
From who?
Dr. Bartman, a new, our new high school-
Science teacher?
Don't normally read them. She was meaning to be here tonight, and she couldn't be here tonight.
Do you want to wait till the board is acting on that?
That would be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that probably would be better.
Any other public viewpoints? Any other public viewpoints? Hearing that, I'd like to move on to the report. The agenda room has titled reports. We have several from summer activities, and I'm not sure who's going to go first, so.
I'll go.
Want to do summer school first?
This won't be very long. I was here not too long ago to share a few things about our elementary summer school experience, and I'm back again. I just have a little bit of information in front of you to share with you about our summer. And obviously, as we close up this past summer, we're excited about moving forward too in terms of planning for next summer. But we ended elementary summer school with an enrollment of 128 students. I think you all know that at the elementary level, we offered a math and a reading and literacy class to our students. We called them jumpstart for the next grade, so kindergarteners were in a jumpstart for first, first grade, and so on, all the way up the line. I really wanted to just kind of focus a little bit on the middle portion of this. Just, just really a simple, couple examples of some data highlights, I guess you could call it, from the summer. You know, we, we looked at summer school as something that would address summer slide, at least try to head it off as much as we possibly can. We know that that's a phenomenon, and that's a reality for students over the summer. You know, when I look back over at some of the data our teachers collected here, just a couple of quick snapshots of that. Of the 14 fourth graders who completed summer school and were present for the end of the summer assessment, all 14 tested either at the same reading level or at a higher reading level at the end of the summer school session as compared to their reading level measured on the spring assessment. I know one of those fourth graders wasn't there for the last couple days in terms of being there for the assessment, but I'm sure it would have been a positive take with that student as well. And at the second grade level, 18 second graders who completed summer school and were present again for the end of the summer assessment. All 18 tested either at the same reading level or at a higher reading level at the end of the summer school session. So, I mean, this played out across the grade levels, and I guess it shouldn't be a surprise, but it's also what we were, one of the things we were seeking to do through summer school is to provide them that literacy and math instruction to help keep those skills as, as strong as possible after the school year ended. You know, there are other snippets and anecdotal data. I could go on, talking about students who come into third grade and don't know their, their math facts with multiplying threes and come out knowing those math facts. And some of those little success stories are some of the bigger celebrations. But we have a lot of that to be able to look back on after the summer school session was ended. We'll also be looking, of course, at our map and other assessment data this fall and be able to kind of look at how our summer school students did overall throughout, as we look at the whole summer, and then compare that to where they come in, in the fall. So we still have more data that we'll need to be looking at related to summer school students' success. We did receive surveys. We sent surveys out to our staff, and surveys also out to the parents and guardians. So we got good feedback on our summer school from both of those groups at the end of the summer, and we'll utilize it as we start to make plans for summer school 2013. And our next steps are submitting that summer school report to the DPI by the end of this next month. And we are planning to bring the summer school committee together on September 26 to review the summer school from this summer and to start making steps toward, take steps toward planning for next summer. Just a quick update, if you have any questions.
Yeah, you highlighted 32, but there are 128 students that were involved with it.
Yeah.
What did the other students?
Well, I just tried to highlight a couple of grade levels.
Oh, sure.
I just worked that out, and I think what we would see across those grade levels, that first, third, fourth, and fifth would be similar kinds of results.
Okay.
I frankly grabbed a couple of the grade level reading assessments to not put too much into this one report.
Oh, sure. I know.
You know, across the board, I think what we were seeing is that students would remain, were maintaining their, their reading level throughout the summer because they were getting that targeted instruction from right at the end of the school year through the middle of July. And these assessments, I think, I think bared that fact out.
Okay. One, one other question on that is we have 128 students here who've gone through something, you know, at varying degrees, I suppose, in various levels of success. Some maybe maintained, some, which is good, at least it didn't slide back, and some even advanced. Are we tagging those? I mean, obviously, when, not with names that you give to the board, but tagging those so we can say, we're going to track these students to say, gosh, they really are flying versus, versus in the past years. We're spending the first couple months getting back to where they were.
That's what we, that's what I alluded to, and yes, we want to look at that information in the fall when we do the Fontis and Banelle assessment and the map test and kind of look at where those students are who went through summer school, so we have more comprehensive information than what this is providing.
And Doug, we'll bring that data to the board when we have it. Yeah.
Love to see that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely make sure we make a point to bring it to you.
Because we are data-driven.
We are data-driven.
And that's really one of the things, too, that I think we can do better next year in terms of really working on precise assessment at the beginning of summer school with one at the end of summer school for our teachers. And, you know, that, that was something that we, we learned-
Oh, sure.
-during the course of-
This is first year.
Yep.
And Kathy Thornburg is here to represent the secondary level, too, with some highlights.
Great. I have information from middle school and high school. For middle school, we had 34 students participate in literacy. And I broke that down a little bit. We had 10 eighth graders, eight seventh graders, and 16 sixth graders. And we had 37 students, math students, 12 from the eighth grades, nine from the seventh grade, and 16 from the sixth grade. So it's like sixth, the sixth graders were the highest, and some of these were crossover. They participated in both the math and the literacy. So, and for the high school, I have a little more information and a couple interesting stories, but we had 75 students taking 116 courses. 22 in science, 27 in math, 41 in English, and 26 plus, I put, for online. For the online students, we had nine students earning 4.5 credits in English, six students earning three credits in math, four students earning two credits in science. And then I had another category, and that was four students earning two credits. The other category, some of those at-risk students that maybe didn't necessarily fit the summer school criteria, but were taking some courses for various reasons, because they qualified through at-risk. So they might have been a social studies course or a Thayer course, or different things like that. For the classroom, we had the areas of English, math, and science. We had 18 English students earning nine credits, 25 math students earning 12.5 credits, and 19 students earning 9.5 credits in science. For a total of credits earned for the high school would be 42.5, which is awesome. And for some of these kids, it was a matter of earning a half credit, so they were back on track for graduation to graduate this year. You know, for some kids, it was just to get them up, you know, to the next grade level or, you know, just, just lots of different things. So I was thrilled with summer school. We, we saw some things happen this summer that you don't see happen during the school year. One example is, this is kind of funny. We had a student, a special ed student, that came in for online. He's a student that hated getting up in the morning, did not want to come to school, but for some reason, summer school clicked for him. And at the end, he finished early, and he said, well, can I keep coming? And we said, well, you're done. Well, but can I keep coming and just do something? So he liked it so much that he wanted to come back. He just wanted to be there. He felt good. I think it's a combination of, we geared the, the curriculum to what they needed, and we had extra help. They got some one-on-one attention. They just, they just felt good when they were there. So that was, that was really neat. My other story, it's another special ed student that I've seen for the last few years. He's a student that I work with, and he hates coming to school. And he, he kind of cops an attitude a lot, and he will kind of shut down when he's asked to do things. He gets frustrated easily. So I, I called dad in the spring, and I said, you know, could we try summer school with him? So we got him to summer school, and you, this student did a 180. He was sitting in class, was in a science class. He was raising his hand. He was involved in the discussion. He volunteered to do things in the class, was up at the board. I didn't know who this, this guy was. But again, he found a buddy there, someone struggling like he was. And he was among the strugglers. And he just, I think he felt empowered this summer, and I'm hoping he carries that over into the school year, and his attitude, you know, is, is a little more positive this year. But, you know, it was just an environment where these kids, everything was geared to their needs. They felt special, I think, and they got some credits. He earned some credits. He felt really good about that. So those are my two stories. That's the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, did you want to?
Sure. Got a little presentation. A lot goes on in the summer with technology. And, what's your name, Mary?
Oh, Mary Rose.
Mary, your host. You really set the table nicely. I appreciate that. But, yeah, there's a lot that goes on in the summertime to really prepare for a school year where all these things are happening with our students, which is super exciting for us as an IT department to have that responsibility. And I think we step up to really meet that specific need. And I had an opportunity to, to share with you a document that highlighted, Crystal Wright, I think they got all that, everything that went on in the summer. I'm just going to briefly go through and guess, highlight some of the, just the key points that happened in the summer. And if you have any questions regarding other stuff, there's so much other things that are on that list you need to see. You don't want to talk about recycling things or anything like that, but it's just a big part of the overall picture, that we're attentive to every single detail that needs to go on here in the summertime, so that we do start off the school year successfully for our style and our students. Few things here on the list that we're going through, and they look, just, I'm just going to go through a few of them, and we had everybody take some nice pictures. Regardless, like the wireless was a big piece of one of our updates this summer. We're looking to obviously expand that wireless network and to be able to provide when any kind of device were to come on our, our network pretty easily. So this summer, we are able to add some backend infrastructure things that would allow us the flexibility to add more devices and their ceilings, and to also be able to add a lot, a lot more devices from our kids or whoever- and to also be able to add a lot more devices from our kids or whoever would bring something in. And to be able to segment out our network into a public Wi-Fi network, which we didn't have the flexibility to do before in a secure way. So that was one big thing, was the Wi-Fi. And obviously, you can see that impact as we are getting a lot of mobile devices, and that's not about to change. The website, we took a lot of time launching that. I think that's gone over pretty well. That was a year process for us to even get to this point. So we're really excited to see it in action. We're hoping that it is community-friendly, dynamic, and certainly student-centered. When you looked at the the website, we're hoping that that was the result we got from that specific, and a website as we put it out. So we were really excited to see that, and I thought that went off pretty well, once everybody figured to refresh their screens, because the old one wasn't there anymore. But that was ten years in the making, so now we've got this new one, and hopefully that's a nice site. That's Jake over there, but he updating, he helped out in the summertime. And he unboxed two hundred machines and put a lot of new computers in our labs and things like that. So that's a big part of our summer, is to remove a lot of the old outdated equipment and then put in some new, more modern computers. So that was really exciting to see that and get those in place, mostly at the high school, where a lot of our labs were getting to be pretty outdated. So he unboxed quite a few. Infinite Campus, obviously a huge piece, our student information system, which is our cornerstone software for our our district here. And Jesse spent an exorbitant amount of time getting ready for the standards-based report cards, which is a big task to overcome. And to prepare for when students, when teachers get here, that they'll be able to input that data, obviously, in a different format. So that was a big, a big update for our department. And obviously, the smart boards are really huge, because now we've pretty much have a smart board in the majority of our classrooms throughout the entire district. So it took four years to get to this point, so I'm pretty excited to see that. We still have a few here and there, but for, I think for most, all of our classrooms were were covered. So it's really exciting to see that in place. That was one of the students that helped Ron. I think Ron was sick that day, so we couldn't get a picture of him. But Ron is a, the maintenance crew is is really paramount, really helping us do all these big projects. So put smart boards in place, and I got to get Mike in here, too, because we do a lot of, we have a lot of computers. And so we have to touch every single computer that you have here and put a brand-new image on that specific machine. And obviously, we had the, we we touched about twelve hundred, give or take, machines to be able to update those, prepare those, so that you have a great user experience when you turn that thing on. Bottom line, as a student or as a staff person, we do that updates, and obviously, we have our Chromebooks that we're updating, too. A little more simplified, but overall, we have a lot of workstation that needs some one-on-one handling. And we have our iOS devices, which are iPads and iPods. All of those have to be refreshed. After a year of students working on them, staff working on them, they need a fresh image. So then when people come back, they can have, again, a good experience when they're utilizing those resources. And we added, obviously, some other new iOS devices to our network. Cleaning, this is stuff that I I don't like to totally forget about this, but we had the opportunity this summer, because we did have some really responsible students work for us this summer to be able to take down like a hundred and fifty-plus projectors, clean the, clean the projector system. We just really haven't had the resources to do that. And that just gives you prolonged life on your four hundred dollar bulb that goes in those specific resources. So we're really thankful that they got in, took them down, cleaned them, and were able to hopefully make them last long. So, again, smiling, young guy, and this is important, too. A lot of people don't think of these detailed kind of work here, because really, what happens in the summertime, if you're not aware, every classroom gets every piece of equipment taken out of it. So I spend the entire year setting it all up, and then they rip it all down. And then we set it all up and rip it all down. So we're really trying to minimize that inefficiency is what we're trying to do. So we're putting permanent desk furniture in classrooms, so the stuff just stays on there, and they can clean underneath it. Okay, so we put about seventy, eighty of those in the classrooms. So there's a lot that goes in, so that we're not running around plugging stuff in to start the school year. And then the teachers, obviously, are off to a good start when there's, when there, when their things work, okay? And then it's not just some cable, that's not their job, it's the plumbing cables, that's certainly ours. But Troy has obviously really helped and get that in place, and obviously, we have electrical and other things that kind of went into that, too. So we're thinking of every, everything to make it so that we get rid of any inefficiencies and are able to support our staff and our students in an efficient manner. And Technology Academy, eighteen staff instructors, which is just awesome and exciting. A hundred and fifteen people, three hundred and eighty seats, thirty different sessions. I just like the idea of eighteen people, our staff, our in-house people are becoming certified, and they're really motivated, and they, they're just really awesome staff to work with. And they have the opportunity, they're teaching the classes, they're teaching their peers and their colleagues. So it's really, it was exciting here in the tech academy, because we had so many people step up and really provide some excellent training for other staff. And this this lady here filled this out, or this person here, but this was somebody from another district that came. We opened it up to another district this year for the first time. And again, what I like about listening to what she says is I'm learning a lot of great hints and tips on what would change my teaching. And that's exactly what this is all about. So that's exciting to hear somebody has that experience when they come here from another school district. So a lot of good, obviously, we survey all people. We want to make sure we're providing the best service for them and the best training that they can, they can, they can possibly get. Here's more pictures. This is a nice photo, too. Our staff, they're doing this, they got their Google shirts on. And excited about, you know, teaching, it was really, it was the best tech academy I think we've had, so I was really excited about that. So that's kind of my summer in a, in a nutshell here. And I have one more thing to talk about with the student interns. But does anybody have any questions about this summer?
I have two questions. Number one, what are those computers over there doing right now?
Mike's imaging them remotely.
Okay. The presentation you talked about expanding public access Wi-Fi, can you touch on that a little bit?
Sure. We just don't have any availability of staff or students or community, or not staff, but definitely community and students before hours and after hours to have access to internet. So they can know, whether it be a community member or a student, we just don't have that kind of access, and we couldn't do that with our older system. So now we have the capability to do that. So before hours, there'll be open Wi-Fi, and after hours, we'll have open Wi-Fi for the community. It just has a, a service for them to be able, be able to get access and use their devices safely.
Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
One question I have, and it's also about accessibility, because one of the training sessions, we got into this discussion, you know, as as the teacher is getting more and more engaged with, you know, getting Google out. Obviously, many of our students have computers at home, but some do not. What are we doing, or what can or should we be doing to make sure that everybody has that accessibility, not only during school, but after hours, too?
Well, I think there's a, we certainly haven't taken that leap to provide students access, but we have access certainly here after school for the library. But we're looking at different models of framework to be able to provide students equal access to technology when they come to school. There's so many different models as far as having cards for kids who don't have their own devices, that you'd hand them a device when they came to school. But again, we're, we're going through that with our Twenty-First Century team that you're on, and we're going to set that framework in place. But right now, we really haven't made any leap forward in choosing the kind of framework we want to put, put in for like a BYOD or Bring Your Own Device access.
Okay. One other thing, and that's just a comment, I mean, the tech academy, I would say, obviously, added a little pictures with them. I, compliments to all of the teachers and staff and your work to bring those teachers up to speed and so that other teachers can learn. And and again, I was very impressed with the presentations, and I learned a lot, too, so thanks. And that's tough to do sometimes.
Any other questions about the summer? So another piece here is, okay, let me move into the next thing. Did they get that job description? So we have, we hire students in the summertime, summer interns, we interview them, we hire them. And then we, this depends, if we can get responsible, motivated, trustworthy, good with people, self-starter kind of individuals, we interview them, and we look for that. And obviously, interested in IT and want to do something in that. So we, we were able to hire two young men this summer, Jake's one of them, and he's doing some of our media stuff, too. And Riley was another one, and he already went back to college at La Crosse. But these guys were super paramount in really helping us get, to attack a lot of the projects we haven't been able to do in the past. Just because of they're super motivated, and they're on task, and they're self-starters, and they just did an outstanding job. They're willing to dive in in a lot of different areas. Regardless, there's Riley, there's Jake, he looks really excited. But again, it's pretty neat, because not only is, and Jake's definitely interested in IT, but he, he's learning how to take apart these machines to fix them and support them. Mike's giving them some training tools so that he can get a certification, so he can move in that direction. He's going to BUU right now. But regardless, it's a fun thing to do for, maybe not for you, but for for them, certainly, it's kind of interesting and neat to see that. So we were very fortunate to have these these two young men this summer. So my, my, and job description, no, they don't.
We got it.
Yeah, good. And hopefully, and I put that together just because I wanted to put an umbrella around what we currently have, so that you can kind of see what the requirements we have for that specific position. And I created that job description, but I'm proposing to extend that current summer internship to a full school, to have for the full school year, with the specific requirements in mind. And because this job description covers both the summer and extending into the year. So we already have the summer, now we're looking to extend that. So I guess I'm looking for your input and possibly moving forward with offering that, because really, it provides not only us with extra support, which we can always use, but also someone or somebody who we would interview that really is passionate about IT, responsible, and works well with people, that we could put them in that environment.
And I don't know if you mentioned this, Matt, but we are looking at limited time, eight to ten hours per week.
Yeah, it's just very minimal.
Definitely is just an opportunity, again, for people to kind of experience that field of work and to be able to contribute to the variable school district. It's also funded out of the technology budget.
So minimal hours, but ultimately, hopefully, and again, if we didn't have somebody who was fit to fit that position, because really, we have very high expectations. And so the bottom line is if it wasn't somebody who wouldn't fit in that role, then we wouldn't hire anybody. But we're looking to open that up and see if we can fill this specific position for the school year. Any questions? It's exciting. I'm glad we're at this kind of point to be able to offer something like that for, for young people that are interested in doing IT.
We can bring an update back.
What's that?
We can bring an update back to the board as you get into that process.
Is that something I need your approval on to move forward with, obviously, at the post that, is that correct?
Looking for a motion to post for an internship for the technology department.
So moved.
Are we talking about one position?
Yes, it would just be one position, that's all.
I would like to suggest, I've had some inquiries
Second.
from community members, small businesses, nonprofits, who have needs for some technical assistance, expertise, especially in computer areas. And I've been interested in proposing to the district some type of alliance, and this fits in very nicely, where the district is a part of its commitment to reach to the community and to support various community enterprises. Might fit very nicely. So I I think this is a great movement, not only for the needs internally, but also for what we're doing in reaching to the community and providing some services. That might be helpful.
IT is one of the areas that we want to target this Share with Kyler program, we're getting kids out into the community, and we're working with M A T C and some of the local businesses to try to facilitate that for sure.
Great.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Negro Secretary by Mcneven, further discussion? Do you have a ballpark as to what monetary?
It's like twenty-five hundred dollars.
Any further discussion? Opposing favors, speak with eyes by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your presentation, Matt?
Yes.
I, Matt, I don't know. Do you want to mention, I'd like him to mention one more thing. The contact that we have from
Oh.
CISA five.
DPI.
DPI. And Naomi Harm, can one of you talk to that?
Sure, I forget the exact name, but there is a national outreach to school districts to submit proposals to have a team of a teacher, an administrator, and a few students, you know, suggest a proposal in terms of what they've done with instructional technology and Twenty-First Century Learning in their classrooms. And if they're selected, and they're particularly looking for a team from the Midwest to be represented, and so there's only two districts that sent a proposal, us, and I don't know who the other district was, then that team of students and teacher and administrator would be supported through grant dollars to go out to Washington DC for that recognition and to go through some other opportunities in terms of Twenty-First Century Learning. The reason we were asked to submit a proposal was our relationship with Naomi Harm. And she, she suggested our district, because she, she's very complimentary of the work that Matt does and the, the work that our staff has done in response to her professional development. And she suggested us to DPI, so we'll see what happens. But nonetheless, it was a great compliment.
We have an update on teacher orientation.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Just real quick update. I wanted to highlight some of the activities that have occurred over the past few days since last Wednesday. We did induct successfully twenty-five new teachers. Each teacher has a mentor paired with them. And some of the activities that we worked on over the course, I left my, my notes over there, but we were
They all came back this week from last week.
They did, they did, they all showed up. Thanks for that stopping. Well, some of the activities that we did with them, we had Matt and the tech department work with them to get them set up with their technology and devices. We had support from the business office with Suzie Richards and Martha Baldwin in terms of insurance options. They spent quite a bit of time with their mentors, setting up their classrooms for, for students and for families, especially with Open House coming up this week, and planning their first week with students. And so I think that was a very valuable time, and we got a lot of positive feedback from our new teachers regarding that. They spent some time with principals, we worked on literacy strategies, we talked about the strategic plan today and school improvement process, it was a very exciting time. Glenn came in and offered his expertise on PBIS. And then we also helped them this afternoon in terms of what are our, our best grading practices in the district and how to start setting up their teacher grade books. So a lot of application. And we rounded it up with some mandatory reporting requirements and a game on Bear Boo, so it helped them assimilate into the community. So I just want to say officially thank you to our instructional facilitators, Teresa Lean and Angie Mapas, who did a tremendous amount of work to prepare and plan for the last few days. Also, our principals, who opened themselves up for a, a little conversation called Principally Speaking, and they shared some, some maybe favorable moments or maybe not so favorable moments from their first years of teaching that our new teachers can learn from. And then I would also like to say, too, thank you to our guest speakers, Martha and Crystal, for coming in and talking to our new staff, so, highlights. And they'll all be back tomorrow, hopefully.
I think this might be appropriate to read the letter, because this is about new teacher orientation. Is that all right?
Sure.
I'd also like to just make a quick comment. I wanted to express a little disappointment that Mr. Meagan has left, because this information, I think, is appropriate to the questions that he's raised. I'm disappointed he's not here to hear some responses. I'd also like to make a note of disappointment that our newspaper doesn't seem to be interested in covering new teacher orientation and the economic impact on our community. In the last two years, we've brought approximately seventy new employees into our district. That translates into roughly two point eight to three point two million dollars of income being distributed in our community to our local vendors. community to our local vendors, providers, real estate. These are important stories for our community to hear, and I'm disappointed that our newspaper finds it not newsworthy. Finally, I'd like to read a letter that was sent to me to be read actually as a part of correspondence or viewpoints, I'm sorry, I didn't have it. This is from Dr. Michelle Bartman, who is our new science teacher in the high school. My name is Dr. Michelle Bartman, and I am the new Biology, Anatomy, and Marine Biology teacher at Baraboo High School. I taught science at McCarlin High School for five years before returning to school to earn my PhD. I completed my doctorate in comparative biomedical science with a focus on neurosciences this past June at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. I had multiple opportunities after completing my doctorate, including continuing my research at the university, teaching nursing students at Edgewich College, or returning to teach at the high school level. I've been asked to comment on why I choose, why I chose Baraboo School District. I chose Baraboo High School as my home because of the large-scale changes taking place in the district. In my opinion, traditional means of instruction and assessment aren't adequately preparing our students for the 21st century, a problem that is particularly pronounced in the sciences. Therefore, rather than cutting budgets, I believe large-scale changes are needed in educational settings, philosophies, assessments, reporting standards, scheduling, content choice, et cetera, in order to meet the challenges of our future. While I don't pretend to know the answer to how best educate the next generation, I want to be part of a district that is constantly evaluating what is working and what is not working, and works with the community to find new and relevant ways to approach instruction. While all these changes can be unnerving and challenging as an educator, and I'm sure as a student or parent, they are necessary to make our schools run more effectively and efficiently. In short, I look forward to contributing to the growth of Baraboo School District. Thank you for your time, Dr. Bartman.
Peter, that, that was an email that was sent directly to you?
Yes, I, I asked Dr. Bartman earlier.
Could send a copy to, to Mary and Mary, and then send a copy to the rest of the board, so then we get a copy of it?
Easy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of new teacher orientation? There is a breakfast tomorrow.
Tomorrow, 7:30, all four members are invited to attend.
I would also like to extend an invite to all of you, as I know you already have, but we have an exceptional speaker here tomorrow that I can't even begin to put into words how thankful we are to have her. She used to be the Chief, Chief Academic Officer for the Los Angeles Unified School District, and in two years' time, she turned around the student achievement with her implementation of RTI under her leadership. So we're hoping to learn so much from her, and she's been tailoring her presentation to our student data and our context. So if you can make it, it would be a wonderful morning for you.
Any, are we, is that the completion of the updates of the summer?
We are now done with the eight.
We are. I'll suggest this getting moved to the continuous school improvement, which there was a calendar sent out to the board, which highlights the topics to be discussed for the upcoming year, takes us through July of next year. It's more of an informational piece for you. I'm sure it is subject to change and addition and subtraction.
As things come, also try to bring those timely topics forward, and if you ever have a request for more information, we'd be happy to accommodate that.
Could I suggest, maybe it's premature to do so, but I don't know if, if there's a way that we could incorporate this into the board section of our district website so that there's-
Yes, we certainly can. We want the board to be able to add on it.
So the public knows, so you're asking for board approval for the tentative schedule?
We'd like to.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pedro, seconded by Riley, any discussion?
Yeah, there was one, and I don't know, maybe it's in one of these other areas that we have there. Math coaches, do we have something where we're going to get an update on?
There is, when we talk about instructional coaching, so that I'm looking, I think it's the first February, yeah, the first meeting in February, they would be included in that segment of sharing.
Okay, because it says instructional coaching and sharing from literacy coaches, but it should also include math.
Yes, actually, and then from gifted and talented and PBIS. So we'll, we'll make sure that all of those areas are, are delineated there.
Okay, and just update it. Okay, otherwise, that's the only question I had. It looks pretty good, and I, I have some comments on it, but I'm going to save it for the ACT section to consolidate.
I'm looking forward to it.
I'm sure you will.
Any other discussion? Hearing done and having a motion and a second, those in favor of approving the continuous school improvement topics for the upcoming year, 2012, 13 school year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you for that outline. Ms. Miller, you are up again.
Okay. No power. In your, in your packet, you will have a copy of the ACT data that I'm going to reference, so I would like for you to pull that out so you can follow along with me. And I want to remind the board, when we talk about balanced assessment in the district, that the ACT assessment falls under summative assessments, which mean those assessments really look at attainment. They're not assessments that we use to necessarily track student progress over the course of a school year so that we can intervene and change our instruction. What the attainment assessment can do for us is we can look at trends over time to change our curriculum and instruction to better meet our students. So the results that we're looking at tonight are results just for our 2012 graduates, so our most recent seniors. And to remind you, the ACT tests assess our students in four subject areas, English, math, reading, and science. And then you'll see a composite score, which is the whole number average of all four of those components, and, and that gives you one score. The highest possible score on the exam, for reference, is 36. And the scores of each subject area are categorized as college-ready or below college-ready based on benchmark values that are provided by the ACT group. So the main purpose of this assessment is to truly measure our college and career readiness with our students. And so again, we can use those results to shape our curriculum and instruction as a district. As a reminder, what does it mean to be college and career-ready? Because I know that this is confusing, but sometimes we talk about, we want to be on target for our kindergartners, our first graders, to be college and career-ready. And so we look at the ACT scores as benchmarks, and we backward map for our students, where do they need to be in kindergarten in those areas, up through each of the grade levels, so that they are on track when they graduate from Baraboo High School. ACT has done decades of research following students who've taken the assessment, and what they determined is college and career-ready is that means if students hit that score, they're predetermined or predicted to do very well in their college entry-level courses when they go into post-secondary education. Over the course of the past couple of years, they talk about it as career readiness too, because more than ever, the skills that our students need, whether they go into post-secondary education or not, they need those same skills, because the workforce is changing, as we've been talking about tonight, the 21st century skills. So our success is measured by benchmarks. So if we look at the data, I'm going to start out by talking about our strengths first, and I'm going to talk about areas for growth, and then talk to you about what are our next steps. When we look at Table 1, in terms of strengths, you will note a trend over the past three years. More students are taking the assessment each year. Approximately for our 2012 graduates, we had 55% of the graduating class participate in the ACT testing, and that percentage of 55% is higher than the national norms right now. That is a goal, I think Mr. Loss would like me to highlight that, and so would Ms. Ren, that we are trying to encourage more and more of our students to participate in those ACT tests, whether they intend to go off to post-secondary education or not. And that will come into play with our new school report cards that you'll hear more about with the ESEA waiver. That will be an indicator that the high school will have on their school report card is the number of students that take the ACT test.
Is this 55%? Excuse me, is this all seniors, or is this juniors and seniors?
Just our seniors. We do have students that take the AC tests, ACT tests already as juniors, but that's not included in this data. This is only looking at our, our last graduates.
What was the percentage in 2010?
Last year, when I came to the board, we were about 50%.
Okay, so if, okay.
We also, if you look at Table 1, we performed at or better than state average in math and science. I would say we're fairly close in English, and you know, it's negligible in my opinion, but you know, we have 20, well, yeah, we have 20 more students take the assessment. If we can maintain those average scores, I think that's something to celebrate as well. We also note that in Figure 1, so you just have to scan down a little bit and look at Figure 1, you'll see that that table is looking at percent of ACT-tested students ready for college-level coursework. So we're looking at the benchmarks. And you can see that in the areas of English and also in the areas of math or college algebra, our students outperform the state in terms of being college or career-ready. Then if you turn it over, you will see in Figure 2, these two charts on the back look at value added from coursework that students take in math and science. And in Figure 2, if you look across the chart there, you'll see that the rigor of our math coursework is adequately, if not better, preparing our students than the state in the areas of math. And we know that at other data points. We know that from our internal data, we know that from the data that was shared with Matt Juvelin from Buu U, so that would be a strong indicator that there's a trend there. To talk about, oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, parenthetically, could you just refresh our memory on Matt Juvelin's report to the board? If I understood correctly, 70% of the individuals who were juniors and seniors who took the UW readiness test-
Yeah, early placement exam, yeah.
-were proficient in college-ready.
Right. What we learned is that 70% of our students were at a level of achievement that going into a UW system, they would have already attained the level of math that they need to graduate from a UW system.
Would we be able to provide this to Mr. Meagan, since he's raised some of these issues? I'd certainly like for him to have those statistics that are outside of the board's control or the district's control.
I think the newspaper is contacting Matt Juvelin to get the raw data so they can make their own assumptions.
That'd be great. So I want to focus on areas for growth, because I know that's a concern too. And so I'm going to go back now to that first table, Table 1. And I'm sure you will note that we've had lower performance than the last two years in Table 1 across the board. There's an attribute for that, and that's the number of students taking the assessment. We know in our field that the more students that are assessed, with the assessment, you're going to see a dip in scores initially. So if we continued on this trend with only 55% of our students being assessed, that would be very alarming. But as we have more students taking the test, we should expect a little bit of a dip. I don't see significant dips here to be alarmed yet, but obviously it's not satisfying. We'd like to see our students perform better. We also performed lower than state average in English, again, although it was slight, and also in reading. If we dig a little deeper and look at Figure 1, which is again at the bottom of that first page, you can see that the percentage of our students who are college and career-ready are below state average in social science and biology. And remember that college and career readiness benchmark looks at college entry-level courses, so that it's not saying our students aren't necessarily at college and career readiness in a particular area like reading, but social science would indicate that that's what's happening. Okay? And then if we look at Figure 3 on the back, looking at value-added of science coursework, what I'm seeing in that chart to help you interpret it is that our students need to take biology, chemistry, and physics to be adequately prepared for college and career readiness or post-secondary education. And right now, the rigor of those courses appear to be inadequate preparing, preparing our students, because we're not reaching the same levels as our state. That's something that we're very aware of in the district, and we've been talking about with our essential, you know, essential learning targets, I've been talking too much today. And also with our requirement that we want all freshmen to take biology coming into the high school, we're raising that bar for all of our students. So I-
What percentage of our high school students are taking biology, freshmen now?
100%.
What I mean before.
0%.
Yeah, okay. So what were they taking? Physical science?
Physical science.
Has that been dropped?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Where's that been moved to middle school?
Eighth grade, mhm.
And then they move from biology in year one to chemi- chemistry in year two?
Chemistry is the preferred route, right? And then physics. And remember that as a board, you've approved three credits of science requirement for graduation. So that'll guarantee our students take that rigorous coursework. Okay? So that's leading me maybe into the next steps. You know, what is the action? We said that this attainment assessment drives our curriculum instruction, so what are we doing? A detailed plan to improve student achievement. So in terms of curriculum, you know, we've spent a whole year last year looking at the Common Core State Standards and identifying essential learning targets. So it's a monumental task, yet that's not as hard as it's going to be implementing that curriculum this year and measuring it with our assessments and guaranteeing that our students attain that. That's why those early release Wednesdays are so important, so that our teachers have that time to monitor student progress and make adjustments in their curriculum. Also, I, I hate this cliche, but it's a cliche that's out there and it's very powerful. We're in the business of human improvement here. We're not going to have instant pudding with our actions. You can't just add water and students are going to do better tomorrow. They will, but they're not going to show up in their 12th grade year yet. Does that, that make sense to everyone? We also want to establish high expectations for all students. We're doing that by increasing credit requirements for graduation, which will guarantee that the students take the ACT core curriculum. The ACT core curriculum is, they say that students will do better, be more college and career-ready if they take four credits of English, three credits of social sciences, three credits of math, three credits of science. And there are students who are not prepared to do that. Also, I mentioned all of our ninth-grade students will take biology, which will open pathways for every single one of our students. We'll also be able to see changes in our English 9 and 10 curriculum that reflect the Common Core State Standards that add a lot more rigor.
Laurie, with the increased rigor-
Yes.
-how critical is that summer school program for credit recovery? Because-
It's going to be essential for our struggling students. As we increase-
Because we picked up quite a few credits.
Right.
And that's amazing.
Yes.
And that's year one.
Right.
But, but clearly, that's got to be one of the most effective tools we have to support to make this happen.
Absolutely.
Because not every kid's going to be able to match the rigor.
Right. As we increase requirements and rigor for students, we need to be able to support them to meet those expectations, absolutely. One of the things that Mr. Loss and I have talked about this year too, is looking at conducting a course audit with all of our departments here at the high school, and looking at our courses in terms of that rigor and relevance. And are there certain courses that are currently in our pathways for students that may not be the most relevant? Is it an opportunity to revise a curricular area and add something that's more 21st century that would help students prepare better to be college and career-ready? And we've developed a new course proposal process to do that. And also the addition of online opportunities for our students will continue to prepare them as well. Mr. Loss has come to you and talked to you about moving to a block schedule, which will allow our students to take more classes and have greater access to a curriculum, prepare them to be college and career-ready. And the other thing about this data is, you know, the ACT attainment data is available publicly, but the data that we collect prior to this, which is the same assessment system with our Explorer at eighth and ninth grade and our Plan at 10th and 11th grade, that's a way for us to monitor student progress with this particular assessment, college career-ready standards, so that we can intervene on their behalf. We collaborate with those neighboring school districts and districts down in Dane County who are very, you know, high-achieving districts that we want to be like. And we're, we're coming to the table with them and sharing our data kind of as a gentleman's agreement so that we can learn from each other. If a certain school district, let's say Middleton Cross Plains, is doing really well with their reading achievement at the high school level, it's an opportunity for us. We attend a meeting and we ask them, what are you doing that we can learn from you? And vice versa. So there's those types of collaboration that are occurring beyond the walls of the high school. We also are participating in a pilot as a district. We are the only district in CISA V that is piloting the Wise Dash, which is a longitudinal data warehouse through the state. It will replace WINS right now for DPI, but we are, we are a district that gets to provide feedback before they roll it out to everyone. And in that system, we are able to see how our ACT data breaks down a little bit more. And so something that I have a lens on most recently that I didn't have before is looking at how culturally responsive we are with our ACT achievement. I can tell you that our English language learners are not performing at benchmark on this assessment, and very few actually take the assessment, less than 1%. And the same can be said for our Black and Hispanic students. And the same can be said for our black and Hispanic students. We also know that our females have a trend of performing better than males. So this type of tool that we now have access to is gonna allow us to have some courageous conversations with staff about why is that? And what can we do to be more culturally responsive to all of our students? Again, having expectation for all. Our professional development initiative at the high school, one of them, is literacy across the content areas. And you've provided as a board a lot of support in terms of instructional materials to support the teachers in delivering their curriculum. And then Mr. Laws also wanted me to share that during his new enrichment period at the high school, there will be opportunities for students to do ACT test prep. Test prep is one form to help prepare our students for these assessments, but I think it's also a great way to teach our students to approach a large-scale assessment and to be prepared for high-stakes testing. Lastly, with assessment, you know, our staff has time on first and third Wednesdays to keep looking at that, I've already talked to you about that. And we'll monitor our progress through explore and plan and ACT. And we want to use the practice ACT with our 11th graders this year, which costs zero dollars because it's online to use with them. And we'll continue our collaboration with Bu Yu or UW Baraboo to use their UW early placement exams as another point of data reference to continue to monitor student progress. The other thing I want to share with you is that the high school has set a SMART goal from their data retreats in the spring. And the focus is on literacy instruction, appropriately so if you look at this data. I think that's the area we need to focus on as a district across the board. And I think that's appropriately matched based on this data. Lastly, I would say, you know, the ACT provides a lot of support for our school counselors in terms of academic planning. And this type of data, along with our explore and plan data, help us guide students into the right pathways. And another thing that you've done as a board is approve the law day recognition process for students because that is a motivator for students to take a more rigorous pathway through their school years. So I know it's a lot to throw at you, but we do, I do believe we are taking the right steps to address the area of student achievement. Not satisfied, but I don't think it's a dismal picture either, but we have work to do.
Lori, do you think that some of the students don't take the ACT because of the cost?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And how much is the cost these days?
We know it's tougher. I look at my expert over there.
Well, because I think it just went up. I think it's forty-seven for the just the ACT and then there's an additional thirteen, I believe, for the writing portion.
Which is optional, the writing portion. There are a number of districts, and it's growing across the state, that are having the conversation at their board level about is that a cost that they're willing to take on and assess their entire student population? I also know, you know, Tony Evers brought that forward as a budget consideration for the state and it didn't make it through. I have understand that it's gonna be proposed again. I'm not sure if it'll go through, but there's a lot of conversation with the smarter balanced assessment. That will be our new assessment 2014, 15, that it potentially could be the ACT. So that would be a huge advantage for us as a staff to help our students be prepared.
One of the things going back to that is not only is there cost, but sometimes there's an expectation by some of our students that are very low, that maybe is lower than it should be. I mean, we found many of these students that went to Bu Yu. Didn't they, they were ones that weren't even going to take the ACT, correct?
Right, sure. Our students sometimes have learned helplessness and they think they're not capable of what they truly are. And so having this data that's transparent to them and again, through our support through the pupil services to help them properly plan based to their academic needs, I think is really essential. So this data helps us do that.
Again, I was gonna ask a ton of questions, but I think you answered a lot of those. I did send a report to the board and I carbon copied you on it. About twenty non-negotiable, that's a tough word to use sometimes, characteristics of high-performing school systems. And you know, I think we really are on a lot of those levels and are working towards a lot of those levels. And I think even this continuous improvement topic. So we have ways to look at it as a board to try to keep it accountable, to be on board with that. But I think we are really on board with a lot of these things. And I anticipate that we're gonna see improvements. But knowing that Roman pudding isn't, some pudding isn't made in a day, so it is an instant. So, but we'll keep working on it and we'll keep trying to support not only you and the other administrators, but our teachers and students every way we can, so.
I just want to add to what you're saying, Doug. I think it's really important is we are doing a lot of the right things and it's important not to have our focus taken away from that.
Absolutely. We're gonna keep our focus on that, no matter what happens. And I'll leave it at that.
Lori, I just want to add that as we keep our focus on student academic achievement, we not forget that we are-
The whole child.
-whole human beings and that our arts program and our sports programs and all our ag programs are essential-
They are.
...to the future development and well-being of our children. And those should not be sacrificed for an additional point on a scale that may not have relevance.
And Lori, if you're going to make the high school more rigorous and demanding, do you have to do anything in middle school or lower to make them more ready for this?
Absolutely. And that's a perfect, perfect way to look at, you know, we know that the early intervention that we do with our 4K and our K students is essential to prepare students to be, like I said, college and career-ready all along the way. So one, actually, I'm glad you asked the question because I wrote that down as an extra note. I believe a year ago, I stood up in front of you and said, "We will identify those targets that are college and career-ready for our students at each grade level." That work has been done and I'm ready to roll that out for our staff this first week of school. And it's high. You know, what we've been looking at in terms of when do we support students with interventions on the math assessment, it's much higher now with the new Common Core state standards and preparing students to be college and career-ready. And that's gonna be a little bit of a shock for our staff when they come back in the fall to see what that benchmark is so that students are on target. So it is all through the grades, just like you said, that we want to make sure that, so yes, it has implications for middle school instruction and elementary all the way down to 4K.
That'll be something too that's transparent and accessible to parents, to students, to board members. On our website, Lori demonstrated that today with the staff. All those essential learnings are available there, as well as our assessment schedule and how we're using that data in registry.
And just to add, you know, setting those higher benchmarks sets an expectation not only for students but for our staff. Because if we don't know what we're shooting for, then it's hard to hit those targets. So I think that'll make a huge difference.
Those are on the website now?
They will be this week. It's a project I just finished in the car this weekend.
They're not there yet?
Wow, she was driving me.
When they get on there, have somebody send us an email where-
Yes, yeah, you're gonna love them. I haven't even showed them to Crystal yet. They're very beautiful.
And Lori, those expectations are for students and staff and those expectations are for parents of students and guardians of students as well.
Yeah, it's a great-
Because it is a absolutely fundamental fact that student achievement happens at home equally, if not more so, than at school.
Yep. These tools will bring transparency to all of us to support our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled dissent for the approval of the July receipts and disbursements. I'm trying to be clear with Mr. Devlin.
Well, we used to think that this was the highlight of the agenda, but clearly it no longer is. But the committee, the committee met and approved the receipts and disbursements. I saw, I'll second that one.
Motion by the head of the board to approve the July receipts and disbursements that is presented. Discussion?
I just received my hard copy of the July disbursements and receipts and I haven't had time to look at them yet, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Further question or discussion? Those in favor of the motion to accept the July receipts and disbursements as presented, any of those saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Is there an abstention? Brings us to personnel recommendations. Background information was provided in your board packet for everybody, with the exception of Mary Rose, which that was sent to you in an additional email. I would like to first of all, address the approval of the resignation of the reading specialist, which was Vanessa Andres. That's a resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pedro, seconded by Mearing, any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of the resignation carries. Brings us to the approval of hires. And first up is the high school science, Michelle Barton.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pedro, seconded by Mearing, any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations, Michelle. Revisited the Jackville Middle School of Computer Science, Gia Fortune.
I moved, so moved approved.
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Pedro, any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Gia. Brings us to elementary reading specialist, and that is Mary Rose.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pedro, seconded by Mearing, any discussion?
Yeah, I read in here that she's personable. I believe that's true.
Mary Rose, I'd like to thank you for coming tonight. And I would like to encourage you to join us as often as possible. And I would like you to, I would like to extend an opportunity to your peers through you to join us as they can. Thank you.
She's not hiring yet.
Further discussion? Those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Is there any abstention?
Mary Rose, and forgive me in the future if I call you Sister Mary Rose, but it's, it would be an elementary Freudian slip. I had written down a plethora of notes over here because I felt like your indoctrination into the Baraboo School District would be a shame if that was your first impression that you got. But a lot of the thunder was stolen at tonight's presentation, thankfully by Lori. And you've obviously talked to her and she's articulated everything we're doing. I appreciate that you recognize the investments we've made because we've made substantial investments over the past years in technology and our facilities, but more importantly, our curriculum and our professional development. We're coming up on the second year of our, of our PLC time. And this is really the dynamic time where we go from oversight instruction period down to the teacher-driven PLC time where it's really going to be taking a look at that log data and talking about student after student after student. This is really dynamic. And this board has made that commitment to make that happen and keep that happening. We've done things in the last four years that have been phenomenal, like 4K and introducing summer school back in, increasing the graduation requirements against everything my daughter lobbied. The modified block in the middle school, the AV block in the high school, the coaching, the mentoring, the alignment to the Common Core and the establishment of essential learning targets. And when you get back and you start looking at them and go, oh yeah, there's a lot of gaps here that we're missing when you lay out all the essential learning targets. And we just picked one category, one curriculum area and it's just like, wow. We're gonna start catching a lot more. But this board is very responsive to the community, perhaps not just to one individual, but to the whole community. Some other things that we've made investments in is our facility needs. You're gonna be hearing about a facility study coming up because we want to make sure our working environment aligns with that 21st century learning environment. And I always like to throw in, we're debt-free. Now, I don't know the word that last year. So lots of hard, you heard lots of positive things that outweighed that.
Jill, I didn't see you until today and I wanted to acknowledge your presence.
Thank you.
And thank you also for joining us here in Baraboo as principal of North Freedom and reading specialist and as a new neighbor. Thank you.
We did vote on it.
I wasn't gonna waste my speech on a-
I'm more-
GLW special education can really grow?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pedro, seconded by Riley, any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Brings us to Cindy, which I think the staff's going to give us a little bit of rationale for the physical therapist position.
Danny did send out a revised email today. We received that.
Is this the email?
This is, yes, the email that's sent, so. So the original proposal that was sent out with the board packet, we have modified that slightly. We are blessed with having a significant influx of special education students this year. Last count, we were up, we are up to thirty additional special education students coming into our district's hall. Many of them coming to us with significant needs, including physical therapy, occupational therapy, school nursing services and such. So initially, when I was reviewing the list of transfer students, my initial thought was that we were going to have to increase Cindy's time to 1.0 FTE to accommodate all of the services that are outlined in the students' IEPs as they are coming to us. Since that time, since last week, Cindy hasn't had an opportunity to review the IEPs. Based on that, based on how we were able to place the students in terms of clustering them within respective buildings, she feels that she is still able to provide the services as legally outlined in the students' IEPs, working four days per week. So continuing an eighty percent contract. However, with that, I am coming before the board tonight to ask that we go recommend an annual salary as outlined in the email that I sent you and the documentation that you have before you. Today, I spent some time out on DPI's website. There is a rather large Excel spreadsheet that is, it's public document. You can download it, but what it contains is the salary and fringe of all of the licensed physicians for every district across the state. So out of a hundred and seventy-five thousand licensed physicians working within our school districts across the state, only four hundred and seven physical therapists work in our districts. Within that Excel spreadsheet, it also lists their contract days. So currently, on average, the average length of contract per therapist was a hundred and seventy-five days per school year with an average annual salary of approximately fifty thousand seven hundred dollars. The average experience for those four hundred and seven therapists are nineteen point two years of experience. Cindy currently will be starting her twenty-second year as a physical therapist. I've outlined before you what the average hourly rate is for districts, not only in the Badger Conference, but as well as surrounding areas. And you can see where we fall in terms of a district. I often get emails or phone calls from employment agencies who are offering services either for physical therapists, occupational therapists, or speech and language clinicians. And right now, the average going rate, if we needed to contract through one of those employment agencies, we would be paying seventy-nine dollars an hour. So this is just some additional information that I wanted to share with you. Cindy is a very highly valued member of our school district family. She brings a wealth of knowledge and just does incredible things with our staff and our students. Cindy is a great source of professional development for our staff. She has gone out on her own and spent her own money to become a licensed yoga calm instructor. And what that program is, if you're not familiar with it, it incorporates traditional yoga practices as well as nervous system regulation. So then she comes into the classroom and teaches students calming techniques which get both their mind and their body ready for learning. And it's just, she shared with you a YouTube video that she had made that is just teachers- And it's just, she shared with you a YouTube video that she had made that is just, teachers are seeing amazing results with that. And again, Cindy took upon that herself and is spending her own personal dollars to be able to get that certification, so.
I don't know if all the board members have seen that, but I mean, it was a pretty incredible video.
It is.
That, I mean, we think of certain students, this is for, this is to help all of our students.
Right, yep, yep, the yoga calm, that's something she is doing as a, per classroom, it's not individual students per se.
Yes.
So we're not proposing an increase in contract?
No.
As far as percentage?
We are keeping at .8 FTE, but what I am asking is the proposal for the annual salary increase.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion as presented please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move right along. Couple of long-term substitutes, Ginger Daly for grade four at East and Barbogino for grade five at East. If there's more time, I'll both together make a motion.
Both together as a motion.
Second.
Motion by Pedro, seconded by Max Nevin, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to new business, and I will turn to Chair Finance for the designate public, designate a public.
Yep, another exciting topic coming out of finance. We have to annually approve the banks that we do business with, and you've provided the list of four that we currently have. We haven't added any or dropped any. So I'm moving to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Nevin, seconded by Cummings, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Mr. Nevin. And now you guys have waited all I think you're down to one. Or approval for the every parent staff's trip to the National FFA Convention, and if you remember, because it was several hours ago, the Indianapolis.
I got it on my calendar. I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Cummings, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Are you gonna hang or are you gonna leave now?
Uh, well...
Thank you.
Brings us to, and you're used to the subject, I guess.
Yes.
2012, 2013, parents enrollment exception application, and we're gonna use highlight four. Also, we have three anymore?
Well, we have three that the board was notified of coming into Baraboo, which is good news. Two from the same family from Queensburg and one from the Dells. However, in those couple of days, we've also received an open enrollment exception application out for a seventh grader to McFarland, which I'm assuming is the virtual school. So that's an additional one for the board to act on. These are online applications, they have seven exemptions to choose from, and the majority of the families are choosing the exemption that indicates it's in the best interest of their child.
I entertain a motion for the acceptance of the applications.
I move to approve the acceptance of the applications.
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Riley.
Yep, discussion. With the, with the advance of the McFarland Virtual School, or any other virtual school, I actually thought that McFarland was participating in the education of students. But McFarland seems to be a shill district up front for a curriculum company that's putting their software online, allowing students to go through, they funnel through McFarland. They're only getting a quarter of a million dollars out of this deal, but yet they're siphoning off hundreds and hundreds of thousands of students throughout the state of Wisconsin to run out of the public education system and into an online education course. Is there, what kind of feedback do we get? What kind of, because if they're not, if they're doing a great job and thriving and, you know, their personal growth is exceeding what we can do, fabulous, great, I'm all excited. But if they don't know what they're getting into and we're seeing tremendous dropout rates, or they're not achieving nearly what they could, how do we get, what kind of feedback do we get?
Unfortunately, not very much, other than the fact that we get confirmation that they are in fact attending, other than that, that's about all we get.
And if they drop out, it goes, it scores against us if they drop out.
Yeah, that's, isn't that our feedback? We end up with a student back maybe a year from now.
Well, you know, I think we have to look at it from a proactive stance, and as you recall, this was the year that we were going to add an online coordinator at the middle school to expand our online learning options at that level. Because that tends to be the level that we're seeing kids disengage from our schools and look at other options. Unfortunately, the person that we had designated for that chose to go to another district. And in order to coordinate the online learning, it does have required training involved. So it's not that we've given up, but we need to now take a look at our staffing options and see what we might be able to do for that segment of the population.
It, it seems like we almost need to, to make sure we're doing the best we can at selling our online learning and our e-school affiliation with the Appleton e-school network. So that parents understand that that is a reality that's right here in this district.
Well, and we don't automatically allow every student to participate in online learning. They have to go through an orientation to make sure that that really is the best method for them to learn. Not all students are successful with that, you have to be motivated, you have to be able to stay on pace. And the hybrid program that we offer, I think, really is the best of both worlds for kids, so.
Do we have the right to deny the application out to McFarland?
Not under the exception. So it really is open enrollment year-round now.
Yeah, we're gonna be getting this probably, we're getting it, it seemed like, almost every meeting now.
It's still at the beginning of the school.
I know, but, but it's just like too regular. Instead of, we just had this once or twice a year, we'd be talking about it, we're talking about it every meeting.
Talk to your legislators.
I will do that.
One thing I'd just like to, one thing I'd like to remind the board of too, as it goes along with the online learning piece, is that one of the requirements that we talked about back in June, when we discussed going to an AV block as well as increasing graduation requirements, was in addition to that credit component, taking a look at service learning, online learning, et cetera. So we'll be coming back to you next spring with a proposal that will talk about what that online graduation requirement will look like. It could be a blended format, it could be a hybrid, it could be standalone courses, et cetera. That's something we're gonna spend time addressing, and we have an action team to work on that this coming year, so.
And that's at the high school?
Correct.
And we're still looking for a staff person at the, to identify someone at the middle school who might be down the road.
Right, we did talk to our new hire about that, who replaced the outgoing staff member. But again, there is that training component, we need to make sure that that's in place. And as we continue to make scheduling changes at the middle school, you know, that will allow more options for kids as well.
Do these families tend to come in and talk to a counselor and say, the child is for some reason not performing here, or is not happy here? Is, we're considering a move to McFarland, the McFarland online program or another? So that there's a conversation that takes place, or does this just come in a letter, an application form?
And do you talk to that? I think that they typically tend to be, I don't wanna say impulsive decisions, but quick decisions. And I don't believe there are a lot of discussions going on of what we might be able to offer them. But again, maybe we need to do a better job of marketing what we can offer those students.
It's a lot easier at the high school level because we can keep those kids, when they come in and meet with us, if they're talking about withdrawing, we do have conversations. It's easier at the high school for us to keep them here because we have more options. So at the middle level, I'm not sure if they're, you know, how that's handling, but that would be a good question more than I could ask.
Yeah, and I'd just add, it's probably a multitude of variables that go into that decision-making. So, you know, what might be true for one family, what might be true for another. And that particular virtual school is fairly new yet and has seen a lot of fluidity that it's hard to really gauge as an outside parent, perhaps, how successful their students are being. So we'll know more over time, but unfortunately, that doesn't help with decision-making for our families right now.
And I would also offer that sometimes, sometimes I don't believe it strictly for academic reasons, that's certainly part of it, but there's a socialization element that we can't forget about, and that students are going through those ever trying middle school years. Some have a hard time assimilating and socially being able to adjust to what being an adolescent is all about. And in some cases, it's easier for them to disengage socially and attend an online environment where they don't have to do that. Whether that's right or wrong is a separate conversation, but I think that's something we're considering.
We might see an increase in that frustration on the part of students as we increase our rigor and...
Obviously, part of the discussion, or a lot of the discussion about in and out of open enrollments is talking about online schools. But I think it's important to note that there was an increasing competition in the surrounding school districts around us. I'll talk about one that's just to the west of here, that had a serious discussion about eliminating extracurriculars and had to eliminate a million dollars from their budget. And I think as those things, reality sets in, and heaven forbid, some neighboring districts have to turn back on some of that stuff. Everything that we talked about here tonight is certainly an opportunity for students from surrounding districts to come to Baraboo and take advantage of what we have. And I'm not, not diminishing the online aspect of it, but there's, there's going to be a real world comparison of school districts around us. And it's important that we continue with our course offerings, with our academic rigor and everything else, so that when people do say, you know, like, this isn't gonna work for me here, where do I wanna go?
Well, this is the first year where we had to deny open enrollment into our district because of lack of classrooms. So as we have those discussions about facilities, you need to keep that in the back of your mind. We're looking to the future, and we're looking at perhaps increased enrollment beyond what we already have and are able to support, we're gonna make space to do that.
Are we going to have those numbers, or some even projections, when we have this discussion on September 8th or whatever?
The company that we're working with has our five-year enrollment projections.
Okay, so we'll see that as part of the discussion that evening?
The enrollment piece should be part of the discussion.
I think another very important point has been made that we need to ensure that we keep an eye on. I know we have instituted peer relationships for students coming in, is, I forget, is that the WIN? Web?
Where everyone belongs.
The web, the web program. I, I believe that it's a very powerful peer-based support, and I wanna encourage our counseling department and all of us to pay particular attention to identifying as early as we can where there might be some social adjustment program or a social adjustment problem. And ensuring that those kids are integrated into whatever programs, web programs, other kinds of things we might be able to develop that can support them.
Further discussion? Having a motion in a second, those in favor of the acceptance of the applications, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Brings us to the Policy and Legislation Committee.
And that's even more exciting than finance, so. We're having a competition here, we'll see how we do. Okay, I'll try to go through these as quickly as possible. I'm gonna go down the line and just note changes and then try to do these very fast. 153, School Board Evaluation, the only change is that we put a date in no later than June 1st of each year, and will be tied to the District Strategic Plan. The Educational Direction Committee has been dropped from that, and that is my motion to approve that particular policy as written and reviewed by the Policy Committee.
Second.
The only discussion I have on that is, is that policy would like to look at a evaluation system, and so we're going to, we're gonna hash that through as a committee and then bring that back to the full board for review.
Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, brings us to 334.1, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, 334.1, Elementary and Secondary Education Act Program Evaluation, the only change was the dropping of the Education Direction Committee and the. And that's my motion to approve that change to that particular policy.
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Pedro, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the first reading of 334.1, as articulated by Mr. Mearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries for the first reading, brings us to 342.4.
Okay, 342.4, Programs for Children at Risk. I move to waive the first reading of this particular policy. This was read by the full Policy Board and reviewed by the full Policy Board at their committee meeting, and approve it as, as written.
You have a second? Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Pedro, waived the first reading of 342.4. Any discussion?
Yeah, just one discussion. Danny, this is a new policy, could you just highlight a little bit of why we have this policy? And so, again, it is a new policy, so I don't wanna just brush right through it.
Yep, it is a new policy, it's based on PI Chapter 25, which is on children at risk. The state statute is not new, actually, the state statute has been around since 1994. So what the purpose of the policy is to solidify everything our, we have had in place as district practice and solidify that into our municipal school board, school board policy. So what this does is will help us to identify in a more formal manner those students that are identified as at risk based on what the state statute defines that as, and to provide those individualized programs and or services for those students in an effort to prevent them from dropping out.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of 42.4, Programs of Children at Risk, which is a new policy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, brings us to 3423 and the attached rule for public school open enrollment.
And we're just doing the policy, 423, Public School Open Enrollment, the rule is just for your reference. The only change on that was basically to the first paragraph, I'll just read that portion. The school district variable will determine the number of regular and special education spaces available within the district on or before the second school board meeting in January. School board will consider a number of factors in determining the space availability, including but not limited to class size, pupil teacher ratios, enrollment projections, tuition agreements with other school districts, and students currently attending school in the district and their siblings. Any criteria that the school board uses to make its space determination will meet the statutory requirements, and will not be either arbitrary or unreasonable. And the only other change is in the legal reference adding the Wisconsin Act 114, which is the reason for the changes and the reasons why we have to talk about this almost every meeting this summer. So that's my approval of the policy.
And we will spell arbitrary correctly.
Arbitrary, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that one.
For a second?
Second.
Motion by Mearing, seconded by Pedro, for 4, Policy 423, any discussion? Hearing this is for the first reading, so these are gonna come back for a second meeting. Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, brings us to 447.2, Doug.
Oh, sorry.
This is a new policy?
This is a brand-new policy. This is a brand-new policy, um, okay, I'll reread that one. Uh, 447.2, Supclusion and Restraint Students, the purpose of seclusion or restraint in a school is to defuse a dangerous situation, protect the student and others from injury and gain a safe, controlled, protective learning environment. The district shall not discriminate in disciplinary measures, including the application of seclusion or restraint of students on the basis of sex, race, color, national origin, religion, ancestry, creed, pregnancy, marital, uh, or parental status, sexual orientation, or disability status. Discrimination complaints shall be processed in accordance with established procedures, and all legal and cross-references are included, and that's, uh, my motion to approve this particular policy.
Second. Motion by, first motion, it read by a hearing, second by Riley, any discussion? Any of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed? Motion carries, brings us to 511, which is a rule, and I don't know that we ordinarily go through the rule for a second reading, so will this be the only?
This is just for reference, so we're not approving it, it's just for board reference at this point.
Does it only take time to read aloud?
511? No, I wouldn't, not the rule. We will read the 512 policy, since there's some significant change, it's an hour.
Okay, so then that brings us to 511 harassment.
Which we do have to approve. Uh, okay, 512, it's harassment and bullying, um, Baraboo School Board Policy. The most protect, productive and satisfying educational environment is one in which education is accomplished in a spirit of mutual trust and respect. In such an environment, harassment or bullying of employees and other members of the school community for any reason has no place. Harassment is offensive, impairs morale, undermines the integrity of the employment relationship, and causes serious harm to the productivity, efficiency, and stability of the educational institution. Furthermore, harassment on the basis of a protected characteristic is illegal and is prohibited by state and federal law. Harassment may be subtle, manipulative, and may not always neatly fit into a legal definition. Harassment is often rooted in power, and the harasser, through his/her behavior, often assumes a superior stance over the victim. For the person, purpose of this policy, bullying is considered to be a form of harassment. The school district of Baraboo prohibits any action or words which can be construed as sexual or other harassment, and considers such actions or words to be a violation of the district's equal employment opportunity policy. Harassment and bullying policy, sexual harassment policy, and slash or work rules, harassment is prohibited in all schools, buildings, property, and educational environments, including any property or vehicle owned, leased, or used by the school district. Educational environments include but are not limited to every activity under school district supervision. Furthermore, the district prohibits retaliation against anyone for filing complaints about discrimination and slash or harassment, or for participating in the investigation of such complaints. Harassment of employees, volunteers, students, or board members will not be tolerated. The school district of Baraboo will investigate alleged violations of this policy in a responsible and timely manner, and take appropriate and timely action for violation of the policy. Violations of this policy by an employee may result in discipline up to and including discharge. Violation of this policy by a board member may result in sanctions imposed by the school board, and slash or action seeking the removal of a board member under state law. Violations of this policy by a student may result in disciplinary action up to and including suspension or expulsion. Violation of this policy by a volunteer may result in loss of the opportunity to continue as a volunteer and removal from all school premises. The school district of Baraboo retains the right to make a referral to law enforcement officials for possible legal action with regard to the conduct of employees, board members, students, and volunteers. In general, harassment means persistent, unwelcome, unwanted, and deliberate conduct or actions directed toward an individual. If the conduct is directed toward an individual because of a protected characteristic of the individual, such as age, ancestry, color, national origin, race, religion, creed, handicap, disability, marital status, sex or sexual orientation, or other protected characteristic, it may be unlawful discrimination. Sexual harassment is one kind of harassment. Harassment and bullying of employees based on sex or gender are subject to Policy 512.1 Sexual Harassment. Harassment in an employment contest exists whenever submission to harassing conduct is made a term or condition of an individual's employment, either explicitly or implicitly. Submission to or rejection of such conduct by an individual is used as a basis for employment decisions affecting such individual. The conduct has the purpose or effect of substantially interfering with an individual's work performance or creating an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work environment. Examples of harassment may fall into the following categories. Verbal, including but not limited to jokes, insults, unsolicited remarks, innuendos, using ethnic or racial slurs, whistling, cat calls, commenting on a person's body, anatomy, or disability, asking about one's sexual life, preferences, or history, turning work or educational discussions into sexual topics. Nonverbal, including but not limited to gestures, staring, following or blocking a person standing close or brushing up against a person, et cetera, giving an unsolicited massage, hug, or pat. Environmental, including but not limited to the display, parentheses meaning materials visible to other employees, students, volunteers, or board members, or the circulation of written materials or pictures degrading or offensive to any employee, student, volunteer, or board member. Conditions of employment, including but not limited to unfair treatment regarding training, scheduling, performance evaluation, discipline, promotion, or transfer of work assignment. Alteration or interference with learning opportunities, including but not limited to unfair treatment regarding grading, discipline, participation in classroom and slash or extracurricular activities, access to classes, scheduling, promotion, and slash or selection for special honors. Administrators are agent of the district, and the district is presumed responsible for actions or inactions by its administrators. In addition to maintaining a harassment-free environment for their staff, students, and volunteers, administrators must ensure their own behavior is above reproach. If an administrator has questions or is unclear about whether a particular activity constitutes harassing behavior, the administrator has a responsibility to consult with his slash or supervisor. Any employee, volunteer, or board member who becomes aware of or witnesses harassment or bullying has an obligation to report it to the appropriate authority under this policy. Failure to properly report violations of this policy may lead to discipline of employees and sanctions for volunteers and board members. If students are the targets of harassment and slash or bullying, or engage in, in harassment and slash or bullying, policies 411, 411-R, 443.71, and 443.71-R should also be reviewed relating to the equal educational opportunities, student discrimination complaint procedures, and the student bullying policies and procedures. Any employee or volunteer who believes he slash she has been subject to harassment in violation of this policy may file a complaint in accordance with established district procedures found in 511 Rule, Discrimination, Harassment Complaint Procedure. Any student or parent or guardian of a student who believes the student has been subject to harassment or bullying may file a complaint in accordance with the district's bullying policy and complaint procedure, 443.71 and 443.71-R, and slash or the equal educational opportunities policy and student discrimination complaint policy, 411 and 411-R. Notice this policy and applicable complaint procedures shall be given in accordance with legal requirements, and all legal and cross-references are included, and that is my motion for this particular policy.
Second. You have a motion by a hearing, seconded by Riley, any discussion?
On this nonverbal, where it says hug, is there an age limit on there?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, the reason I ask is...
The case is unwanted, persistent, and...
You're talking about like at, at, at an elementary school?
Yeah, I'm talking like at GLW, some kids might come in there, Molly gives them a hug, that might be the only hug they get all day, and I don't see anything wrong with that.
If it's persistent and unwanted, it's harassment.
Unsolicited, unsolicited.
Law makes no distinction about age.
Further question? Any of those in favor of the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed? Motion carries, Doug? I don't have 512.1 in my package, I don't know if the other board...
That is just for reference only, um...
Can I have it? I pulled it up online, I just didn't know if it was in there.
No, no, there is nothing, it's just, I think, because this one is, is highly tied into it, is that we included that. Um, one policy that we will be getting to is the bullying policy, so, it is part of this, but we will be getting back to that at a later date to include that policy, which...
So the separate is the 537 rule?
Which is just for reference only at this point.
So, I'm gonna read the 533.
Okay, let me get that. Okay, oh, good, this will be quick. Okay, professional staff recruitment hiring, 533. Uh, the only change on that is in the first line, all professional staff vacancies will be posted on the district website, and, and the only other change is in the cross-references, uh, the BEA agreement was dropped from that, and that is my motion on a professional staff recruitment and hiring.
Second. Motion by hearing, second by review, any discussion on 533? Any of those in favor of its first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, um, all of the policies will be coming back for a second reading, I don't know that it's necessary to include the references that are...
No, I don't think so.
Thank you for your work, how long was that to come up?
It's pretty long.
Don't ask.
Do you want me to tell you?
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And the rest of the...
They, they all did a good job.
Brings us to CISA 5 CTEC, which is the Career and Technical Education Support Services, um, we're given background from CISA 5, um, the recommendation is to partake in the services?
Become part of this consortium.
Part of the consortium.
It'll allow us to collaborate, it'll also allow us to have that agency review our allocation of resources and our grant application.
And the fee is twenty-five percent of our...
Well, and actually, all of the costs can be taken directly out of the grant.
Credit in essence offsets, I mean, it's offsetting the grant, then, if we use out the grant, we, not that it's not worth the investment.
Right, some of the things that we had initially targeted within that grant are not allowable under the, the, um, parameters of that grant, so it'll help us off, it'll help us use professionally-fold and curriculum funds for those purposes, and then we can backfill the other needs with the grant.
Is this a business-type related thing, so, I mean, again...
Well, you, you have to have a LBEC license, and Mike Carpenter had that license, we don't have any staff who currently hold that license to coordinate the Carl Perkins, it's Carl Perkins.
Okay, so he used to write the grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's the reason why now all of a sudden he may have some additional costs.
Right.
So, okay, I, I understand, and I, I forgot about the fact that Mike did that. I move to approve.
Did you wanna add anything?
I was just gonna say, I, I know that the cost is a little bit, but it's offset because you can use purchase services with the grant to pay for that service with CISA 5, but I see it as an opportunity to get so much more with those dollars too, 'cause we'll be able to collaborate with all these other school districts on our programs of study in the career and technical fields.
We weren't collaborating before, but now we will.
We weren't part of the consortium, and then also, um, was the other thing we were gonna say about that?
Did I also see if the description that grant-writing services are provided as a part of the consortium?
For the Kyle Perkins, correct.
Only for the...
Only for Kyle Perkins.
And we will remain fiscal agent for the grant.
That is correct, yes.
Just, just the housekeeping, we had a motion, didn't have a second, we've been discussing, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
For putting that to our attention. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Executive Close Session, and this motion has been published. So... Second. Second by Riley, what call?
Aye!
Stand.
Persistent.
Thank you.
I'm pulling jackets.
Aye!
I'm pulling jackets.
You know what's really bad?
See, I think all the...
We're just gonna sit there.
So, people stick around and want to...
Hey, Mr. Goodness.
Or perhaps you could say, "Get out fast."
You know that to go home, we just need to...
It's great to see you all!
It's now thirty.
It's our time.
I wish I could beer tomorrow, Lauren.
Aw, you're having beers?
No! I love to see the teacher, and the teacher.
You're gonna miss it.
Yeah.
That's huge.